Okay, ladies and gentlemen, it is now six P M. And I don't have my glasses, D J. Would you get my glasses out of my office, please? I forgot my glasses.
Oh, my God.
Well, I gotta see. Anyway, I want to thank everybody for being, uh, I'm glad to see all these people here. That's wonderful. This is a special called City Council Meeting for November the thirteenth of two thousand and twenty-five at six P M. Meetings are available to watch on our YouTube channel. Search for the city of Bruce Valetti and click the subscribe button. Please mute your phones and computers to avoid any interference during the meeting. All right, again, uh, we have been called to order, and if y'all would, uh, I just want to say thanks, everybody for being here. Uh, I love when I see seats in the seats, okay? Because that means that people are concerned what's going on in our city, and that means a lot to us because we, we're here for the citizens of Bruce Valetti and for our city. So that's why I just love for people to come out and give us their questions, have their answers, whatever we can do for you. All right, if you please stand for prayer. Our heavenly Father, I come to you tonight with praise that, you know, if without you, Lord, we wouldn't be able to even be here. Uh, you gave us all life. Our parents gave us birth, but you gave us life. You gave us our first breath. Lord, I just pray that you'll continue to keep watching over everybody in the city of Bruce Valetti and people all over the world that need you, and we all do. Lord, I pray that you'll continue to take care of our first responders, take care of our city workers, our city council, uh, the water department, the fire department, all of that, in special prayer for our military men and women out there that are fighting to keep our country so that we can have a better life here in the United States. Lord God, I just say that, you know, we just, we just had a day for them yesterday, uh, on Monday, I think it was, and it just, thank you so much. I mean, Memorial Day was, was a day to celebrate everything on Tuesday. So just thank you, Lord God, for every all of them. Lord, I just pray that you'll give us all the courage and the strength and the wisdom to be able to face tonight and to be able to listen to our citizens and to listen to what's on the agenda and to be able to make the right decisions for our city. Sometimes our decisions may not, uh, be what everybody wants to hear, but in the long run, it's for our citizen and for our ci- city. Lord God, I just ask for all these things in precious name of our Lord and Savior. And Lord, I'm also asking tonight that if you would just, the special, special prayers for families that are really needing you in their life right now. They have lost loved ones, and they just need you to touch them, Lord, and let them know that everything's okay. And we are gonna start, well, we know you listen to us. We just ask that you show us what we need to do. You show us the right way. That's all we can ask for. I ask for all these things in precious name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one fate, one draw, unindivisible. You may have a seat. Okay. All right, uh, before I do the community announcements, I do want to say that, uh, Chief Dorsey come to me and talk to me about maybe having a special, uh, announcement time uh, on council nights for citizens that need special prayers, or if you know of a family that needs that special prayer. You know, to let us know and that we will, we'll have that special prayer just for that family, or they can have a prayer. Uh, you know, uh, they can pray for us, pray with us, you know, whatever they want. So we're gonna try to work something out in our agenda so these families can have, have their, have special prayers. All right, now, community announcements, uh, I know we have some. I have one here. It's called, it's the Christmas tree lighting. And these are gonna be going up all over the city of Bruce Valetti. I hope. I'm trying my best to get them out there. This will be my third year to have Christmas tree lighting out here at City Hall. And it's gonna be, uh, December the fifth at six P M. Uh, we will join together. We get out there. This year, I got the, uh, uh, Shelley Founts. Am I saying that right? Founts? And she is, uh, with the Bruceville Community Church, and last year, they come and done Christmas carols in front of my house for me. And it just warmed my heart so much. I asked her if they might do that here, and she said they would. So she's bringing her girls and boys at, uh, from the church, and they're bringing their karaoke machine, and they're gonna sing Christmas carols. And that way, we don't have to, I told them, I said, well, we sound like dying calves in hailstorms. We need some music. We, we need somebody to lead us. So she said, well, they'd be honored. So they're coming out here to help us with that. We're gonna have refreshments and coffee and hot chocolate that will be served in, uh, in the back here, and, uh, please come out. I did hear through the grapevine that Santa Claus is coming, and you know when Santa Claus comes with gifts and joy to bring to every, all the kids and stuff? Grinch also comes along. So you gotta be careful. So, but anyway, uh, there'll be time for pictures for the kids and families that wants their picture made. And that for, that there right now is all that I have. Now, I know we have some for the church from the... Yeah, what is it? Blue Santa. That'll be the chief. He'll talk about that. Now, don't y'all, y'all have something at y'all's church that y'all doing for, okay? I know some places are having, uh, giving Thanksgiving dinner to families, uh, uh, and stuff like that. And then I know, uh, the church, the Methodist church is doing all kinds of things. This Saturday, we're having our Fall Fest. Uh, we used to call it May Fest, and then it went from May Fest to Spring Fest. And now it's called the Fall Fest because we figured there's no graduat- usually when we have the spring, there's always graduation, people going in and out of town, on, uh, stuff like that. So this time, it's a Fall Festival, and we're gonna have all kinds of vendors and food, all kinds of food to eat. I think your church is providing some hot dogs and stuff or something like that. Was your church doing something for, for the Fall Fest?
Uh, we're doing pulled pork.
Pulled pork sandwiches. Yeah, they're gonna have a vendor out there for pulled pork. Yeah. And, uh, then, but there's all cool big kinds of vendors out there. Uh, we're gonna have, um, chili cook-off. If it's not too late to join, all you gotta do is just let them know that you're gonna bring a pot of chili, and you put it up there, and they'll come by and test it, and they're gonna have a chili cook-off. We're gonna have car shows, uh, I think, uh, around a hundred or something so cars out there for car shows. And we're gonna have, uh, cow patty bingo. And if y'all don't know what that is, uh, the city, or the mayor is doing a two fifty dollar gift cards that I'm giving away at the booth for the citizens that wants to come by and sign their name up to it and take some literature from the city, what we offer. And, uh, my, uh, we also have a pet crematory in town that's doing some stuff. We have, uh, just all kind, I mean, just, can y'all think of anything else that I've missed? Or, okay, go ahead, Mr. Prater.
Thanksgiving dinner fundraiser at the senior citizens', uh, center, uh, citizens'.
So that, and they, they serve everything.
It's, yeah, it, it's everything.
A lot of food.
Oh, yeah, it's, uh, turkey, mashed potatoes, yams, gravy, green bean stuffing, cranberry sauce, rolls, and dessert, dine in or...
Yeah, turn that thing on.
Uh, Bruce, Bruce Valetti United Methodist Church has a number of things that they're, um, starts at six P M. Uh, we're starting announcements on the buncle. Um, we have, and I don't have the date. They have a, a ton of cookies.
It's listed out there on our board.
It's just listed. We're gonna have a conductor there, and you get your gold ticket, and you can have your pictures taken. Oh, yeah, uh, we just opened our, our mini library. Uh, we had an open house, be, uh, advertising for the library, uh, being open. We also, Monday night, they're doing a, uh, for grades six through twelve, a, um, it's, then they'll have games. Um, this last Monday was the launch of that, and we had video games set up, so they went into the big hall. They had the big screen up there, and they could pick whatever game they wanted and play the game. Um, and then there's all kinds of board games. They were in the back playing board games and stuff like this. So, uh, it's a lot of fun for the kids and stuff like that, kids and adults, and just come down there. Um, I know Danielle, that's how she met her husband. She went to a place where they were playing games and stuff like this. And so, uh, I think that's all.
Not necessarily an announcement. I just want to give a couple of thank yous. Uh, so I was contacted by my neighbor a couple of weeks ago, the, and then, uh, last week, the Bruce Valley Police Department was dispatched out to my house. I spoke with Officer Cade. I just want to publicly say thank you for his professionalism and his friendliness, and he even respected the...
Thank you very much. They, they all need it. We all need our thank yous. Does anybody else have any announcements that they'd like to announce, or anything going on special that y'all know of, uh, that might? Yes, sir. Chief Dorsey? Yes, sir.
I just wanted to share with everybody again that December twentieth from six to nine is our third annual Blue Santa. This year's gonna be at the Family Life Center, the Bruce Valetti United Methodist Family Life Center, which is across the street from the church off Osborne. Uh, we're having it there because we've outgrown our old venue at the police department, which is a good thing. Hopefully, we'll outgrow the Family Life Center.
Amen.
And then we'll have to figure out where we're gonna have it after that. But, uh, we're, we're adding some things. We're gonna have activities for the kids this year, pictures with Santa. Uh, we're, of course, have a free meal, um, and just have a great time, and hopefully...
Lots of gifts.
We'll have a great turnout, and we're still accepting sign-ups for gifts, and we're not turning anybody away. So please sign up if you need some help for, and then we'll either deliver the gifts for those that can't make it, or families can pick them up, or they can attend the, the event.
Okay, all right.
So.
All right, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a good, they've been, they have good food, and, uh, so if you know any family that might need some help or something, or even if you just want to come and eat with us, come and eat with us. There's gonna be, we always have plenty of food, anybody. I go there and eat. I mean, I, I never pass down food. There's gonna be, we always have plenty of food, anybody, I go there and eat, I mean, I never pass down food. Well, they can drop the gifts off at the police department. Here at City Hall, I will, we're gonna get some boxes out here for gifts. We're trying to get people to, so, once we get all of those people, the people signed up for that, then we're gonna put a list out, this is what, you know, we need for this child, this child wants this, you know? I mean, it's, it's amazing what some kids want, you think, okay, well, they just want toys, or they just want this. I had a young man one time tell me that what he wanted for Christmas was a box of snack, or he wanted some snacks, and he wanted a bed to sleep on because he slept on the floor. So guess what, he got a bed and mattresses and comforts and sheets and a big box of snacks. That's what he wanted, that's what he got. The citizens are so, I mean, these, everybody just gets together and gets these kids what they want. So, you know, please, you know, just help us if, if you can, if not, our pockets get a little thin sometimes, but we dig down deep, don't we, Chief? And we try to get them what they want, what they ask for, so it's a good thing. All right, anybody else have any more announcements that they would like to talk about, community announcements? If not, we're gonna move right along to the citizens' presentation. The city council welcomes the public comments at this point on items not specifically listed on the agenda. Speakers must sign up before the meeting begins. Speakers are limited to five minutes each. The council cannot respond to matters not listed on the agenda until a future meeting. Do we have anybody that has signed up to, for anything? Okay, moving right along. Number four, canvassing our general election. Council to hear the readings of the official election results as certified by McClennan County Election Department and approved by the McClennan County Commission's Court. Council to discuss, consider, and possibly take action on resolution R eleven dash thirteen dash twenty twenty-five dash one to officially canvass the results of the November the fourth, twenty twenty-five, general election for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-seven terms of one m- m- merril seat and two council seats. And the results are, the mayor was, didn't have anybody run against her, so she, she got it automatically. I know I had three votes, two votes back there and myself, that was three, I know of. And then, we had, that was said, the way that reads there, it says a hundred and forty-one votes for the mayor. Cast votes was a hundred and forty-one. Under votes was forty-nine, over votes was zero, absent votes was one, early voting fifty-one. Election day voting ballot cast a hundred and thirty-eight, total ballot cast is one ninety. Registered votes, eight hundred and ninety. Turnout percentage was twenty-one point thirty-five percent. Okay, then we went with Richard, or we had three people running for council, Richard Prater, Melissa Funch? Am I saying that right? Funch? And Joyce McLaughlin.
You're not gonna be the only name she mispronounces.
I, I get names terribly, okay? Cast votes was three hundred, Richard Prater got a hundred and forty-five, Melissa got a ninety-six, Joyce got sixty-five. Cast votes was three hundred and six, under votes was seventy-four, over votes zero, absent voting ballots one, early voting ballots cast was fifty-one, election day voting ballots was one thirty-eight. Total ballot cost was one ninety, registered voters eight hundred and ninety. Turnout percentage was twenty-one point three percent. And that says end of the report on that part. And if anybody needs to see here, it says that Linda Owens got one hundred percent of the votes. Richard Prater got forty-seven point three-nine percent, Melissa got ninety, got thirty-one point three-seven percent. Joyce got twenty-one point two-four percent, which equals a total of a hundred percent. And that's the end of that, this is what they sent me from the county, so I'm reading it, end of report. And let's see, that's, that's it, okay, that's repeating itself, okay. All right, so that's all of that, so do y'all make the motion on this? Okay, Mr. Wiggins?
I know that thing's...
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve resolution R eleven dash thirteen dash twenty twenty-five dash one.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, Rich, Mr. Richardson, second that, okay? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, number five, swearing in of the new elected council members. Newly elected council members will be sworn in into their respective offices, okay? Selection, okay, that's six, okay, all right. Now, I need to have Melissa and Richard, and then myself, and Renee, we're swearing in our city secretary. She's gonna be taking Pam Combs' place when Pam, Pam retires in December. Okay? And what I'm going to do, I'm going to swear in, how do we get this done? I'm gonna swear in our city secretary, and she's gonna be legal to swear me in. Then I'll swear in our... And this repeat after me, raise your right hand, please. In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, I...
Renee Ford.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute...
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office of...
The duties of the office of...
City secretary...
City secretary.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability...
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend...
Preserve. Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States...
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
So help me God.
Wait, sorry, just wear it.
And by the authority of the state of Texas...
I...
I, Linda Owens...
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute...
That I will faithfully execute...
The duties of the office of...
The duties of the office of... Mayor of City of Bruceville Eddie.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability... Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend...
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
The laws.
The laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States. States and of the state, so help me God. Now, if the two council members will step up here, and we'll do it together, Ms. Melissa, and, and raise your right hand, please. There's a guy, so I know I have to make that. Raise your right hand, please. In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas...
In the name of the state of Texas.
I...
I, Richard Ford.
Melissa Funch. Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute...
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office...
The duties of the office.
Of city council...
Of city council.
Of Bruceville Eddie.
Of Bruceville Eddie.
Of the state of Texas...
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability...
Will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend...
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws...
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States...
Of the United States.
And of this state. So, since Melissa is new, Joyce will be stepping down, and she'll be getting Melissa her chair. And ladies and gentlemen, Joyce has done a very good job for us, we're glad to be here. And, and we swore in our city secretary, Pam Combs, is still our number one city secretary until she retires. And she will be, when she steps down, then we will give that job to, we know sure kind of stuff, thank you. And that's just temporary until we can get the new, everybody had a temporary till that time. But, so, but we'll have two city secretaries, if just one will be responsible, and that'd be Ms. Pam, because she's been with us for a hundred years.
Just about.
She's been here with us forever. All right, just wanted to let you guys know that, okay? All right, next on the agenda is selection of mayor pro temp. Council to discuss, consider, and possibly take action to select a mayor pro temp, temp pro for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. The mayor pro temp, commonly known as the mayor pro temp, presides over council meetings in the mayor's absence. And the one we have now, I don't think you served a long time, you, you had to do a lot of things for me, right? While I'm, was I absent a lot?
He's, he's second.
Yes, Mr. Wiggins.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion that, to...
Before we vote, does Graham want it again?
Oh.
He don't have a choice.
Yeah. Apparently, it'd be at least nice to ask.
Okay, Wiggins and Prater? Had a first and a second, all in favor?
I guess I should have voted.
Okay, good luck, all right, all right. Number seven, citizens' request of consideration, Jana Haney. Council to discuss the property located at seven oh one West Third, Eddie, Texas. Okay, Jana? If you need me to hold it up, I'm a good holder, I can hold things up.
So, hi, my name is Jana Haney, I'm at six oh three West Third Street. I don't want any, I didn't get in time, but I don't expect any voting or anything. I just want some feedback on something that my husband and I have been talking about doing. So I do have, can that be bigger? No?
Okay. We can try. And there's, there is a laser button up there, a little silver thing up there at the mic? Jana, up there at the mic, there's a little silver thing that you can point it and it'll red dot it.
Okay, well, we're gonna, we're gonna use this, and all, this, okay?
You wanna put it up here?
Over here, well, I don't see it.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay, so this is border here, and then this is fourth back here, and this is third, which is the main street. And everybody calls it here. And so there's a piece of property here, that goes from third to fourth, that hasn't had any money quite some time. This house burned down, it's a little bit slow my time. But, what we're looking at, we may is putting three duplexes on that area. We have to rezone, replat, and we have to drive the driveway. But before we even purchase the property, I did wanna have some feedback and see if, if the citizens or if the council even was interested in having duplexes in that area. And then if anybody is interested... We would, of course, encourage easements for, for utilities and things of that nature, but we would like to utilize the entire front to back.
All right, so you're wanting that, the section, what section is that?
See how it's red on the, on the left side of the screen? I just wanna locate it, I'm sorry. And you're wanting to put, what there? Three duplexes. Three duplexes. One would face third, one would face border, and one would face fourth.
Okay, thank you.
And then, this is a little on the right, I'm gonna get my fancy little laser pointer out here. So this is just the MCAD of it, and this here, I don't even know, let me see. So, okay, so this is third here, and this is the proposed area up here, and I wrote our name right here and here, because we do live here currently. This is some acreage back here off of fourth that we hope to build our forever home on one day. So this is not something that we're just wanting to drop and go. This is something that we are heavily invested in because we are on both sides of it. So it's not something that, you know, it's something that we wanna keep long term. That would require rezone, replat, water lines, we'd have to make sure that they could support that. But before even purchasing the property, is that something that people are interested in having?
Okay, Mr. Wiggins?
It's my understanding that is, if, I don't have no problem with that, abandoning that right away right there as long as, long as, you know, we can get utility right away there.
Of course, yes.
Now, because there was a house there, I assume that there's still one water meter, and will be one sewer connection, or, so will, you be able to, Pam could answer this question, maybe. Is, would there be enough, is the line gonna be big enough to, for her to get two more water meters there? Do you know?
It would be...
Oh, Johnny?
Five more.
Johnny?
Yeah, yeah, but I, I just thought that you might know.
Do we know what size line is there right now?
Do you know Johnny?
Okay. Yeah, that is fourth.
That's right.
That's four.
Oh, that's six inch, oh, okay, so there'd be plenty, yeah, okay.
Now, she's gonna need five.
Right, five, it'll be five.
Five, you'll need five, so you'll need like four more really additional.
So they'll pay their own water bill.
Should be one there that was committed, you know, that's all four lens old place.
It would be six total, so it's...
Six, oh, I, I got you, I got you.
It's gonna be three duplexes, two, two places in each duplex, and everybody pay their own water bill, so they'll have six water lines, you got one free, you need five more.
Okay, all right, it, it sounds like with the six inch, it'd probably accommodate that, is what you're thinking, Johnny?
Yeah, and then we're also doing construction in that alleyway across the street, we replaced that avenue line, that other alleyway.
Right.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Okay, what about the sewer, that would be my only...
That's brand new, that should be supporting everything.
Yeah, yeah, because the sewer, I know it's going down Fourth Street, is it going, I don't think it's, is it going down border?
Not, not, not this time.
So it would be, have to be septic until...
I wonder if you could, I wonder if you could come off of, could you come off of Fourth Street and feed all, six of them, five, six?
I think we might, I think we might have to, because in order to have three there, there's not enough room. You have to have a half an acre for...
Yeah, you're gonna have a half acre for...
Right, so we'd have to do sewer, so if we had to tie into, to fourth, we would just have to absorb that expense to go farther.
Pay for that to be connected.
Right, but that we can't have septic.
Yeah, yeah, because it wouldn't, right now, it wouldn't be hooked up, because it wasn't, wasn't done, it wasn't a rooftop, you know, one rooftop, but it wasn't...
Is that gonna, can you look at her map, Johnny, and, and, because her map is right there? You should be able to look, that's all right, hey, yes.
Pam, you got a question?
Here, Pam.
Renee, Pam?
The only thing I can think of, it's probably gonna be left up to the engineer, and if they're willing to pay the infrastructure costs to put the sewer line there.
Yes, yes, no, no, I, no, I...
I don't know what, to say yes, you can get it without going through them to find out.
Yeah, but I mean, I'm just, no, I agree with you, I mean, I think they would have to assume all the costs there for the hookup and everything, but I just thought if the sewer is just, go ahead, Johnny. They got it going down Border Street? Okay, so it's going down Border, so you ought to be okay.
Yeah, you're gonna be able just to hook it up to it.
Yeah, you just have to pay for the connections and all the, running all the lines, you'll have to do all that. Yeah, and I think it'd be good probably to have the, the houses that I see here... Yeah, and I think it'd be good probably to have the, the, the houses that I see here, is this, is this the type, something similar to this?
Yeah, it, that is, those are the plans that we purchased.
Okay, these are the plans and the type that you're gonna build is, looks real nice, so I think that would be a really asset over there. I, you know, I, I don't foresee any problem for, I'm concerned.
Okay, Mr. McGurk?
Now, the, the intended use, are you gonna sell these?
No, sir.
Or you're, you're gonna-
No, sir, we, we're very invested.
You're gonna rent-
Yes, we're actually gonna move our son into one of them, so he will technically own that one, he'll rent the other side out, but we will continue to maintain the other two. Because we're not leaving him.
Okay, no, no, I, I guess, what I'm, what I'm saying is, are these gonna be rental units, or are they gonna be units built to sell them off?
Yes, sir, no, sir, they'll be rentals.
They'll be rentals, okay.
All right, uh, Ms., Ms. Ma'am?
I always wonder what your estimated timeline is.
A long time. So, we're estimating probably a year, I mean, we, we're not in a big hurry, um, we're not gonna toss them together. I wanna make sure the sewer is absolutely up and running, you know, because what's- Thank you, uh, market, yeah, across from the, uh, senior center, uh, and that one took us a little over a year, that wasn't a new build, that was a, a full remodel. Um, so we're, it, as long as it takes, I guess is the answer.
All right, okay, thank you. Okay, you, you, wait, Mr.?
Yeah, the other thing is, is, is right now that zone is single family dwelling, so you're going to be applying for a variance to make that multi-family dwelling.
Yes, sir, we'll have to rezone and replat, because as of right now, it's two plats and then a right of way. So we'd have to rezone and replat three times.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? Do we have a motion?
No, oh, wow.
Do we need a motion on this, I mean, you're just asking for our feedback for if-
Yeah.
I guess I got a question.
It was just on there, just, just discussions.
Just for feedback, I'm sorry, Mr. Wiggins, yes, just, just to see if anybody was strongly opposed, we wouldn't purchase it.
Do we have anybody out in the citizen, in this, uh, audience, do y'all have any objections or anything to duplexes going? Nice, and they're really nice looking duplex, I don't have my picture of them, but really nice ones.
We've got pictures of the house.
Yeah. Uh, yes, everybody's got a copy of them. Here you go, you wanna take it down there and hand it to him, you want me to? Oh, I didn't know you had one, I'm sorry.
She's looking to see, because I did, there we go, so that's, that's the, the back of it.
All right, all right, ladies, gentlemen, Mr. Wiggins, uh, Councilwoman Wiggins has a question?
So this will be the, the front, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay, uh, just, just keep in mind that when you do come back to rezone it from SF one to probably, uh, multi-family, then they'll, well, we'll have to send out anybody that lives within two hundred feet, as you know, that, so they, there could be somebody come up and oppose, I don't know.
Sure.
But I mean, just, we are aware of that.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Yeah, okay, okay, thank you.
And these are like two bedrooms, one bedrooms?
Two, two, two bedroom, two bathroom, yes ma'am.
Actually, actually, Linda, actually, Alvin there, do the, the, uh, design for it.
Yeah, I've seen that, I like it.
Yeah.
I like it, I like it. Okay, yeah, I think it'd, I think it'd be a good thing too, and, uh, congratulations, and I hope things work out for you.
Thank you, and thank you, council members.
Yes, you're welcome, you're welcome. Okay, all right? Did you, all right, um, number eight, uh, Atmos Presentation, Council to receive and discuss the future upgrade to the Atmos Utility Lines. You're up.
First off, let me thank y'all for letting us be here tonight, uh, my name is Joe Bredy, I'm a project manager for the area with Atmos Energy, I've been within fifteen years. Um, and so really tonight is, in the essence of time, there's a much bigger presentation, and there's somebody that's way better than me at telling that presentation. Um, and so I, I'm happy to touch on a few of those points, but I'm kind of do it in the process of explaining the area of replacement that's coming to, uh, Bruce Waddy. We're gonna go through and we're gonna change, or we're going to replace every main, every service, every meter in a certain replacement. I have some maps, um, to hand out to the council in case you guys are curious about that, um.
Thank you. I understand. So, there's gas lines all throughout here?
Yes, ma'am.
And then after this is done, we won't have to guess where those gas lines are, will we?
Well, and then there's a, there's a lot of other benefiting factors that also, um, and so to start from the top down, as you can see, um, i- it's, it covers a broad area and it looks a lot more daunting than it really is. Um, we have some, for lack of a better term, we have some top shelf contractors that they do, they handle these area replacement for us in a ton of different areas. Um, right now, we're currently doing, doing one in, uh, Inland Passes, my hometown, uh, we're doing one in Clean, Texas, we're doing several in Cameron, several in Temple, Holland. So it's, it's not just you guys, it's literally everywhere, we have Moody kicking off at the same time, Bruce Waddy's gonna be kicking off as well. This is a, 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 I don't wanna say a program, but this is something that Atmos has done, not because we're having problems, but because we don't wanna have problems in the future. We are, uh, very much so a safety company that delivers natural gas. And, uh, I've, I've been with the company fifteen years, uh, Corey Bain, he's operations supervisor for the Temple area, so he covers this area every day. Um, he's been with them longer than me, and, and he'll tell you the same thing, but it's safety, 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 and so, um, like I said, we'll go in, the crews will, uh, I think ultimately what we're looking at doing is starting the, we'll start mowing in, uh, assets as far as, uh, tractors, bore rigs, I'm kinda getting our stuff set up, street plates, um, you know, all the odds and ends that we need to conduct business in that way. And, uh, that'll start somewhere along the line of next week possibly, um, we're having to finish up some other phases in other areas before we can move those crews. And so it's kinda, it's going to start out slow, we're gonna start with one crew. And we have seven phases, as you can see, um, we're starting with the blue phase on the bottom, I know it's hard to tell, they're numbered.
That's okay, see.
And we're gonna work in numerical order, we're gonna go one, two, three, four, five, all the way to seven. And one ties right into the next one, ultimately, we're gonna have three crews here working. Our ideal timeline, everybody wants a hard date, I, I, I want a hard date as well, I, I promise you, and I, I can't give you a concrete date any more than the man on the moon. Um, with rain, weather, uh, utilities, everything under the sun, that's just an, an impossible question. Our best guess in this is that by this time next year, we are completely gone out of Bruce Waddy, and this is completed one hundred percent.
Okay.
And so, and again, that's not concrete, that is my hope.
Yes, sir, I understand.
Yes.
Okay, Prater?
Is any of y'all lines gonna be in our roads, or is it all easement?
It'll stay easement. Um, and so if you're, i- I, I know it's hard to tell on the map, and I apologize. So on the map, if you'll look, um, the dotted lines, some of the dotted lines are new lines that we're gonna put in so we can tie in areas, so we have a two-way feed. That is, that's a home run for us, if we can have a two-way feed, if, if, uh, so-and-so is digging up a tree in their yard and they hit gas, and we have to squeeze that gas line to get it to stop to be able to make that repair, this gives us, hey, nobody's outside, nobody's losing gas, um, we have two-way feed, that, that's, that's what we strive for on every system.
Okay.
And so that is also a factor in this.
Well, our town is really shell shocked right now from the sewer system, and, uh, every one of us up here catches a lot of heat.
Yes, we do.
And so-
Can you give me the name of the streets?
Yes, ma'am.
That y'all are going down?
So the-
I can't make it out on this.
Yes, ma'am, so the two main streets, so the one that runs, uh, from left to right, east, somebody referred to as Main Street, Third Street.
Okay, Third, uh-huh.
And then, uh, I apologize, my eyes are great either, and I did not memorize the, the street names, but, uh, so to tell you the ones on the top, I've kinda based all my maps off of the two main runs through town.
Yes, sir, okay, Third and Fourth.
And so, but that is the extent, of what you see in the color is the extent of where we'll be.
Okay, all right, now, uh, one more question, oh, ma'am, and I'll, I'll, I'll shut up and let somebody else talk, um.
And, so, we, we were lucky enough, a, a, a week or so ago to have a meeting.
With Johnny?
Yes, and, um, w- we're not here to make anybody, we understand that it, it's a lot of work and it looks daunting, and so, the, the big question was, uh, lead time on locate, so you guys can have time to locate those utilities before we come in and we start pot, we daylight everything before we send the bore.
My God.
So this is gonna be ninety-nine percent all bore shots, this is gonna be extremely minimal open cut trenching.
Good.
And we daylight everything, so you will see some, a lot of areas that are netted off, a hole maybe two foot wide, it's got T posts, it's netted off, it's safe to keep, hey, don't walk over here. This is so we know exactly where it's at, what depth we need to be, and of course, that's water, sewer, we don't, you know, we don't wanna hit anything. And the thing about it is, is if we do hit anything, that's on us, obviously, I know you guys have worked with Atmos for a long time. And, uh, the, one of the points we like to stress is, this shouldn't be a burden on the city. This is really a great upgrade for any area, doesn't matter who you are, because it's purely towards safety. This is extremely just us saying, hey, this pipe is maybe a little older than we like, maybe it's not the right type of pipe that we like, there's a few different factors in it.
I would love to have gas in my house.
But it's us saying, we wanna upgrade this, and the benefit to this project is, as you mentioned, the sewer lines and in-water, we come through and rerun what we call Pro Pipe, it's a company that comes and does, uh, cross-bore inspection. When they do those cross-bore inspections, they're gonna run your sewer lines, they're gonna run everything they can, and so there's that benefit, obviously, once the, like, that phase is complete. That's one of the last things we do, is cross-bore.
Is there any new construction that y'all are gonna be done, or y'all gonna supply like the others? We have no gas or anything over on Silver Circle.
So at the time, because the area is already developed, it, there hasn't, we, we haven't seen a ton of need, um, as far as, uh, kind of a return on investment. Um, is it worth us spending the extra money to extend mains further in, into town? Because we don't get those calls for people asking for gas, because it hasn't been there, their houses are generally already set up as electric or propane. And so we, we, we don't see that opportunity at the moment. Now, um, for future business, uh, it, please let us know, we, we're, we're here to serve gas, that's our business.
Thank you.
Um, and so, uh, reach out with anything, I, I would urge you, and I have plenty of cards and everything to, to further that, and we're happy to help.
Okay, Mr. McGurk?
Yeah, quick question, um, a quick question is, is, uh, we're going to, we're in the process of putting in four hundred new homes approximately, over by the high school, and I don't think that's serviced here on this map. Now, that would certainly be an increase, are you gonna run lines down that?
It didn't show.
Uh, we, I, personally, I've not been aware of a new subdivision, and so-
It's by the school, so it's not-
And, and, um, we do serve the school, I'm aware of that, and so here's the thing, is, is if it's an opportunity and, and it's something that the developer is looking for, so that, that, that's a, that's a kicker in a lot of it also.
I think they're going totally electric.
Yes, and so i- if they don't even consider us, then there's not a lot we can do about that.
Okay, Mr. Wigg, oh, no, first it's Joyce, and then Mr. Wiggins. Oh, did, okay.
Uh, breaking ground, I'm assuming right after, uh, December one.
Okay.
We're, they're, they're gonna be mobilizing in, um, we've gotten with the city, and it's been fantastic, um, our contractor has allowed us to use some, some land for a lay-down yard. Um, and so the, it's staging equipment, getting materials here, and then of course, there's, we're, we're brand new into this, into this area, and so it's a lot of daylighting utilities, pot-holing, um, things like that, and that's a whole prep that we'll go through every phase before we ever send a piece of pipe through the ground.
Okay, any other questions? Uh, Mr. Prater?
What's the name of y'all's contractor?
Uh, T, Texas State Utilities, TSU.
TSU?
TSU, yeah.
We're gonna, we're gonna do some, we're gonna do some digging on them, so, stay tuned.
I tell you what, I, we, I use them, I, I work with them every day in these, in this capacity in many other towns, and they're fantastic.
Yeah.
And, uh, they're, they're extremely good at what they do, but please, any questions, reach out.
Yeah, we, we learned our lesson last time.
Yeah, and we, we run into that as well, um, there's always a s- fiber in everything else, there's always a lot of horror stories. The one thing we especially urged in the meeting, um, with the city last week was, if there's a situation, if there is a, um, resident that's not happy, maybe there, there's tracks in the yard, or they dug up the yard and you, you, you don't like that they dug up your, and I apologize for that, but at the end of the day, let us have that. Please send that our way, this project should not be a-
That Bruce Waddy area, and y'all, all your water department, fire, all, they all know our guys anyway, and they're pretty, I get texts from you guys all the time. But I just want y'all to understand, like, through this process, we will have a re, if we have somebody here, we will have a representative on behalf of our company here. Uh, if it's not an Atmos truck, it will be our inspector who's on, who we pay to be in our place. So, any questions on the ground, they can talk to anybody on that crew, they will answer any question, uh, they will be polite. Um, I do want you, just to understand what it's gonna look like, when you look down the street, after we've been down the street, once they daylight it, you will see the orange netting. They will have posts on that street, they'll be open for a short amount of time, and then they're gonna fill that back in. If y'all drive down the street, or you're getting a complaint about a piece of netting coming down, that is something that we wanna hear about. We, we drive them at the end of every day to make sure, but we wanna know about that, uh, we wanna make sure, because I understand there's a lot of foot traffic, kiddos playing, um, you know, dogs, we don't want anybody falling in any holes. Um, you know, uh, we won't, we won't say the contractor that we've had so much trouble with over the last couple of years, or year, uh, over here, but this is not how this is gonna go.
Okay, yeah.
It is a very fluid process, um, y'all, I mean, we're right down the road in Temple, my guys are, are here for y'all. Um, any questions, any concerns, do not hesitate, we will answer them, and if we can't answer them right that second, we are gonna get somebody on it, it's, it's the number one problem for the day. If you have a question and we can't answer it, we're gonna get you an answer just as soon as we can.
All right.
Um, and as far as like new construct neighborhood, they can come up and make that request at that time, and that may be something that, that we can do at that time. Um, we do have the ability up to a hundred foot to give somebody a gas line that didn't previously have one. The only, the only real restriction would be, the house needs to be ready to go for gas. Uh, our company does require that they have had gas piping in the house, so they would need a plumber to come plum the house or whatever. And, um, so that is really the only requirement, and then they have to be close enough to be able to get it, so. Uh, I know there's a lot of people we hear in a lot of these towns that, they come up and they say, let your residents know, if we're working on the street and they don't have gas, that's a conversation that they can have with our people on the ground.
As long as they're equipped for it.
As long as they have gas piping in the house, yes, and, uh, you know, that can be something, we're gonna be here for about a year, so if they can get that done, you know, that's a process that we can do.
If they're outside of the length that y'all allow, are they-
Pricing for that, uh, and we call them wise projects, and it's just basically funded by the customer after that hundred foot.
Okay.
Uh, we do have that ability, um, we wanna be a great partner for the city of Bruce Waddy, we hope we have always been a good partner, but, uh, we want to continue to keep that partnership great with y'all. So like I said, just anything you need from me or my guys, I know I passed out a bunch of my business cards at the meeting, um, so they have all of our phone numbers, and, you know, I'm living the two-cell phone life, all the time.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir.
Yeah.
All right, all right. Any other questions? Yes, sir?
Uh, one last thing, it, the, this sheet right here, so we'll have a right-of-way inspector onsite, and his really complete job is to be the first line for anything that's going on. Um, when it comes to the residents, the businesses, anything like that, and so, what we do as a company is we make these corporate flyers, we put the maps together, I know it's a single door until he gets an answer. Um, we've run into every problem under this, ah, we don't use our front door, we have no way in on that, I'm sorry, why didn't you put it in the mailbox? Well, if you looked at your window and you saw a stranger putting something in your mailbox that wasn't wearing a postal service uniform, what are you probably gonna do?
Yeah, exactly.
So, we, we do, we, we, they're door hangers, so it'll be essentially this sheet of paper, um, before time with some more contact info, maybe another sheet of, uh, paper stapled to it. But it's just to inform, hey, we're coming, this is what we're doing, this is the area we're gonna be in, if there's any questions, the numbers, contact info is there.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, Rick, okay.
Have them permit their work?
Will, will they have to have their what?
Permit.
Would they have to get a permit to do this?
Yes, from the city.
Yeah, yeah, they already got all that.
Okay, just making sure that one's taken care of.
Yes, they've already, yeah, I'm thinking, huh? Yes, sir, they already have their permits. Joyce?
Could we put this information on savvy citizen?
Oh, yes, ma'am, and that's what I was gonna do, once, and once we know what area they're gonna be working in that time, well, that week, we'll put it on savvy citizen, so everyone will know that.
The same corporate flyer, um, Tammy Longman, uh, there's a lady that's supposed to be in the buildings, we urge, if it's helped a ton. Oh, that's what I'd say.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Wiggins?
That's, that's what I was gonna ask, about putting it on savvy citizen.
All right, we can do that, okay, uh, do we, Council to receive and discuss the future upgrade, so we- So, we, does anybody else have anything? If not, we're gonna move right along. Okay, going to number nine. McLennan County, twenty-twenty, excuse me, on resolution R eleven dash thirteen dash twenty-twenty-five dash two to adopt the McLennan County Hazard Migration Plan update. Okay? We have any, anything on that? Mr., uh, yes, Chief?
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
I was just trying to let y'all know that, uh, Tim Juski, he's the Waco McLenn County Deputy Emergency Management Coordinator, and he's here with us tonight, so I'll let Tim come up and-
Come on, yes, please.
He can explain it better than I can, so.
Uh, good evening, council. Good to see everyone here. Federal requirements are that the hazard mitigation plan for McLennan County, which was developed about two thousand, two thousand and one initially. Um, we've had great participation countywide with, uh, planning meetings, um, from all jurisdictions, so this is not just the city of Bruce Floetti. It's every city plus McLennan County and Baylor University are, um, part in the county, obviously, uh, on this plan. So, it's been a long planning process, several months. Um, planning for this started actually summer of last year. Um, now we're to the point that we have a finished product, over nine hundred pages of the plan itself. And it's an opportunity for the council to adopt the pasture grant funding. That's really what this all kinda comes down to. And the way that works is this, there's really two ways to access mitigation funding. Uh, the first way is, uh, say a tornado hits town, um, the federal government, uh, if it's a presidentially de- declared disaster, will help replace infrastructure that was lost. So, city hall gets wiped out. The city would work with, uh, the county, the state, and the federal government to deter, um, that's kind of the standard pro- program. Mitigation funding after a disaster would allow you, say you had a great idea and you're like, hey, let's, let's storm-proof it, right? Let's make it a, a safe room. Let's build it, harden it, engineer it, make it a, make it a, a s- community center, do all these different things. Well, that adds cost. FEMA's not gonna help you, the federal government will not help you with that additional cost, unless you have a hazard mitigation plan, and you're mitigating the hazard by making it a safe room of a tornado or a windstorm event. So, they'll give you additional money to pursue that, I'm gonna call it an upgrade. Uh, we had a thirty-foot bridge, it got completely blown out, and was wiped, completely wiped out. Um, the residents in that area and the county commissioner were like, we should not have that happen again, because it was like an extra twenty-five minutes for emergency services to get back there, right? It was a real issue. So we pursued mitigation funding and replaced that thirty-foot crossing with a sixty-foot actual bridge. And FEMA paid for seventy-five percent of that, of that larger structure. So that's how you utilize hazard mitigation. Plans like this allow you to pursue, uh, that funding after a disaster. The other way that you do it is every time there is a disaster, whether it's here or anywhere else in the state, say a hurricane, or any, or a tornado in the panhandle, or a big fire, the community doesn't mean you can't pursue some of that funding for projects in the state and in your community. So, um, that is another avenue by which you can access hazard mitigation funding.
Mr. Prater?
Yes, sir.
I'm in talks with, uh, uh, Pat Currie right now. We're talking, uh, getting our tornado, uh, alarms and a, a generator for our senior citizens for cooling or warming station. Sure. That's where we go when we have tornado warnings.
Absolutely, with this. So actually, um, in the plan, you'll see it identifies several different hazards, tornado being one of them, winter storm, um, hailstorms, extreme weather temperatures, those things, things like that. And then mitigation's just a, a word that means, we know there's, you know, something that can happen, how can we make it hurt less? And so by building a safe room, we can prepare to try to protect people. Um, and so you'll see projects like that actually in the plan already.
Okay.
Um, and if it's not in there for the city, the plan can be updated at any time. All you have to do is just let it, let the county know, hey, we'd like to make a change, we'll work with you on that and get that submitted to FEMA. And so FEMA can then up, update the plan and give us approval for the updated plan. So-
He, he's working on that right now. Uh, he said, uh, legislators just put out money for all that.
Sure.
So.
So this would, through the planning process, identifying these needs, um, so I just really, whatever funding stream he's looking at, I think would support that.
Okay, sir, okay, thank you. Anybody else have any other questions?
Motion.
Yeah, okay, alright, um. Yes, sir, we're ready for a motion.
Okay, I'm like a motion to approve resolution R eleven dash thirteen dash twenty-twenty-five dash two.
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Prater's seconded. All in favor? Ananims for these plans, thank you.
Ma'am, if I could, I'd like to thank Chief for all of his participation and city staff here.
Yes, sir. Before I go to the next one, I, I know people have been asking me about our city administrator, and when he was talking about this, this would be something that the administrator would do to get with them and try to get grants and try to get all that stuff done. This is what a city administrator would do. And we do have one that we have offered, and I'm, I'm pretty sure he's taking, he's gonna take it, and he'd be here, I think, December the first. So, we will have a new city administrator, uh, uh, starting December the first. So I just wanted to let you guys know that. And that's what they do. They get out there and they hustle and get grants and stuff to get all this stuff, so we can have sirens and everything else that we need. So thank you, sir, for bringing that to us. And thank you, Chief, for working at it. Okay? Our district board of directors, council to discuss, consider, and possibly take action on resolution R eleven dash thirteen dash twenty-twenty-five dash three, casting two votes for candidates to the McLennan Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. Mr. Wiggins?
Okay, uh, i- if you look at this, you can, uh, we have four votes, let's get that established first. Eddie has four-
Do we have those?
Four votes.
Do, do what?
Ask him if we had those on the-
For us, and we can do this, is to cast all four of our votes for Jim Smith, which y'all know he's our county commissioner, and he's an exceptional man. Yes. So that's, that'll be, that'll be m- my motion, is to, uh, for us to-
All four votes.
All four votes for Jim Smith on resolution, uh, eleven dash thirteen dash twenty-twenty-five dash three.
Okay, and Mr. McGurk is seconded, all in favor? Okay, any, no, put that down here on my notes. Alright, uh, okay, uh, cast ballots for candidates to the Falls County Appraisal District Board of Directors. Council to discuss, consider, and possibly take action on resolution R eleven dash thirteen dash twenty-twenty-five dash four, voting for candidates to the Falls County Appraisal District Board of Directors. Alright, and y'all had a chance to look those over?
I did.
Okay, uh, you want, somebody wanna start it? Mr. Wiggins, you wanna-
I'll start it, okay. I, I looked up every one of them, and I came up with, uh, Jay Saul Bright, Deborah Levels McDavid, and Shirley-
Okay, and Melton. Does anybody else have anybody else to, that they wanna do besides those three? That y'all know of, or know of them, or done any research that y'all wanna talk about on it? Alright? If you, okay, do you make that a motion, Mr. Wiggins?
Oh, yes, ma'am, I'll make it a motion.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Mr.?
From Mr. Albright, McDavid, and Melton.
Okay, and we have a second already by Mr. McGurk. All in favor? Ananims, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, number twelve. Uh, establishment of the Employees Handbook Committee. Council to discuss, consider, and possibly take action on the creation of an Employees Handbook Committee to review all policies within the handbook. Uh, we-
So, I, I request this be added to the agenda. It was one, was one of the things that Kent, when he left, that was on his kinda to-do list for, like, the path that he left for us, was to create, to go through the employee handbook, kinda see, see if anything needs to be updated, changed, that sort of thing. Um, my, my suggestion is just, first of all, we see a motion to see, see if we wanna create a committee. Like, it's been something that's been brought up as a, uh, as a, as a to-do list, we just never got around to it.
Right.
Um, sorry, I was blank on my train of thought, I apologize. But the, we do, so, looking into this, we did have a licensing committee that we created, but they never actually met. So we don't have any committee currently working on that. So my first, my first thought is we create the committee and probably have, like, if the mayor wants to be on it, but our new city administrator-
Established one about a year ago.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
And actually, and actually, Mr. Prater and I were put on it, but, and we never had a meeting. And the rea- reason being is because the city administrator was snowed under with the sewer. And we're still like that.
Yeah.
So, I, I'd like to just table it until we get our new city administrator in here. Let him get his feet on the ground. I mean, there is no sense establishing it right now, I don't feel like, until he gets in here and he sees what he needs to do. We need to establish one, but the number-one priority to me is let's get this sewer finished, uh, and, and go, go, then go from there. So I, I'd just say, let's table it and wait till he gets in here, get his feet on the ground, and then we'll go from there.
Okay. That was the answer I got.
Well, it was gonna be for both.
The city secretary.
No, it was gonna be for both.
For everything.
Okay, well, in that case, I got bad information from the, uh, people that I was talking to. But either way, I'm fine tabling this, but since we talked about this and approved it a year ago, and we're looking at six months to another year, I think we need to start over and redo our committee members.
But, but, yeah, and I don't, I don't, this, you know, I'm not saying I disagree with that, but I mean, this handbook has been in place for, I don't know how many years, uh, long before probably us, but, but- Yeah, to the Last Supper, yeah. But, I mean, and it's, and we're still here, and it's been working. Now, yes, it probably needs some tweaking, I don't disagree with that. But I just think, to me, I want him concentrating his time on that, and really not this right now. Uh, I think that's most important, you know, and the people back there got their hands-
Yes.
I, oh.
You had it first.
Okay.
Then we'll go here.
Okay, um, I ha- have to agree with, uh, Councilman Wiggins in that. Uh, you've got a new city administrator coming in. We're already gonna throw a lot on his plate when he walks, comes in, takes his position. And to throw this on there too, and he's not familiar with the operations that we have here. He needs time to, to acclimate to our way, way of doing business, and to our staff, and our, the way we're structured, fall behind. But then, uh, take and bring it up at a time when he settled, the new city administrator's settled in, our city secretary is, is now getting more acclimated to this position, and, and so I think there's, there's a whole lot of things going on, and a manual's probably not something that we need right this minute. We, we, but we do need one, we need it updated. Um, there are other, just as a, uh, an aside, I know that Rick, Mr. Richardson and I, Councilman Richardson and I had talked about, we also need to look at our, our codes and things like this. And that process is not gonna work, so we need to start working on things like that.
Renee?
Um, no, I was just gonna clarify too, though, when Pam and I were researching, um, when an employ- the Employee Handbook Committee was created, it was created just for licensing and certification, not for the whole handbook, so just for clarification.
Right, yes, we, okay.
On, uh, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, Joyce, you had a question? Okay, Mr. Richardson?
No, I'm, I'm perfectly fine tabling it. I wanted to have this discussion, possibly look at committee, creating the committee, because we have had some things that fall off the radar, and I wanna make sure this ain't one of the, like, how much money did we just cut for our, for the, uh, eighty-hour, over-eight-hour leave? So things like that, I mean, like, yes, it's working, eh, but I just don't want to get forgot, drop off the radar. I'm fine waiting six months, having this conversation six months a year from now.
Alright, good, alright, we can table it then, so then. Mr. Prater?
Too easy.
Oh, I was just gonna mention that, uh, on our reports that we get in the agenda, uh, that's still waiting to meet.
Okay, alright, but we'll go ahead and table that then, so there'll be no action taken tonight, it'll be tabled.
Yeah, I, I'm like a motion to- I'm like a motion to table it.
I'll second.
Alright, all in favor?
Second, I'll motion.
Alright. Okay, so we're gonna say Wiggins. And this one right here, uh, there's gonna be no action on this tonight. Uh, we have been discussing this with the people that we're trying to get it from, and they are coming up with a hem-hawing around some stuff. So this is gonna be for a later date, okay? So number thirteen will be at a later date, after Gene gets back from his trip. Alright, fourteen, staff report. Council to discuss and consider staff report from the city administrator, chief of police, city attorney, consulting engineers, and department head. Okay, and so, do y'all have any questions for any of these people besides the city administrator, since he's not here?
Okay, the, the only thing is, on the, on the city administrator, I would say, of course, that, that's gonna fall under you for now, but-
Yes, sir, I'm-
I think, uh, I think a lot, a lot of people out there wanna know, and I believe this will be coming up, maybe at next-
We have a contract right now, uh, cuz it costs us money to get this going. And I talked to them today, and, uh, they said, quote-unquote, "Since the administrator's not there, I feel like you and I can work things out together." And I said, "Yes, sir, what can we do?" And he said, "Well," he said, "we need sixty more days." I said, "Sir, here's what I'm gonna tell you." I said, "You're not pinching any more money out of the city. I am tired of it. And if you don't, are not through with us taking all of your trucks, and col- col- getting all the holes fixed, and all of that stuff out of here by, before, by December the thirty-first, y'all gonna owe us some money. Y'all gonna owe us money, because that contract that we signed, that negotiation, and everything that we done, says December the thirty-first." I said, "Now, as far as the railroad bores, then I need emails from you to the railroad, and from railroad back to you, so we know what, so that we can be in the loop." And he said, "Well," said, "they're charging us eight thousand dollars." And I said, "You talked to Johnny?" He said, "I did." And Johnny said, "That was on us." I said, "Yes, sir," he says, "but I think the city needs to play it." I said, "Sir, did you not hear me the first time? You're not getting any more money out of the city, we're done. We're not gonna give you any more money. The eight thousand dollars is coming out of your pocket. That's between you and the railroad, cuz we have no idea. That contract will be through by December the thirty-first in town." He said, "It's just out there getting the bores hooked up, the lines hooked up to the bores, to the railroad, and the one on Evergreen, the, uh, ex- uh, excess road on Evergreen, about a hundred foot there, and we'll still have to have pipes going there and get all that connected."
They're working on that now.
I said, "That's fine." I said, "But the citizens are tired, we're tired of it." And he said, "Well, why are you being so, you know, why, you know," I ain't gonna say what he said. And I says, "Sir, I'm just gonna tell you. I said, "We're tired," I said, "we're, we're tired, the city's tired." You know, we have been over backwards, so I'm gonna tell you right now, we're, we're tired, we're not gonna give you no more money."
Yeah.
And that's, I left it at that, and he said, "Okay, thank you."
Well, but another thing is, you're talking about Blackrock.
Yes, sir.
When Blackrock finishes their part, then we still have another part that has to come in and, and, and take your septic tank, pump your septic tank, backfill it in, and then they have to come and hook everything up. So what I'm talking about, by completed is, I wanna flush my toilet and it go down the sewer, not in the septic.
The people that are hooking it up, uh, they're gonna hook it up, they're about seven, according to pra- uh, I mean, Tabor, they're about already seventy percent done. They do that, then the streets gonna be coming in, then we're gonna empty all of the septic tanks and get that. So the emptying the septic tank's gonna be the last thing before we can turn it off.
Okay, I thought that, for me, from my understanding was, the streets was gonna be very last, because we didn't want, we didn't wanna come in here and redo our streets, and then have trucks come in here on them messing with the septic tank. So I thought, so do we have, do we have, Mr. Pam, do we have- Do we have, uh, Johnny Tabor, can he come to our next meeting?
He's coming.
Yes.
He, he's scheduled to come for the next.
Okay, and he'll be able to speak about this? Let's, let's put it on the agenda where he can speak.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, let's make sure it's on the agenda where he can speak, because so many people are never gonna get it done. When is it gonna be? Well, I, I don't know. All I can do is ask.
Yeah, I had somebody come up here the other day, and they were complaining about it, you know, they said, "Yeah." Said, "Well, it's the mayor's fault, she's the one that hired Blackrock." I went, "Whoa, no, I didn't. It wasn't me, I swear it wasn't me."
But, okay, so if we could, if we could do that, that, that would help out.
Yes, sir.
And then, uh, and, and on a, a far, well, I've got the floor, if you don't mind.
No, you go for it.
On the MRB, uh...
Report, okay.
Let's see, on their report.
Engineer, okay.
Yeah, yeah, on, okay. On the MRB report, it was about to read the development review, Eagle Prairie and... Horseshoe, okay. MRB on the Eagle Prairie, which is the development over here by the school. The MRB has met with the city and developer and is nearing completion of the first round of preliminary plat- comments. So, now you know a little bit about the Eagle Prairie, where we're at on that. And then on the horseshoe bin replant, received and under review. What, what, where is that, horseshoe bin replant? What is that?
It's just a individual that's divided.
Then on the water report, I just, you know, I usually give like a little summary.
Okay.
So, I'm gonna give that, and, and I tried to reduce it some. So, we, 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 we pumped one million, four hundred and thirteen thousand gallons less than last month. We used a hundred and ninety-one thousand more than last month. Our water loss was six hundred and four thousand, three hundred gallons more than last month. Our loss percentage was three point ninety-two percent more than last month, and we sold about fifty-five percent of the water pumped, and that was it.
Okay.
And that's all I have on the reports.
Anybody else wanna say anything on the reports or ask questions? All right, then we'll move right along on that, okay? And will be enacted on by one motion. There will be no separate discussions of these items unless the council member or a member of the public so requests. A, approval of the minutes. Uh, B, approval of amendments to the facial year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five annual budget. C, uh, write off bad debts. D, designation of official newsletter. Let me see if there's any news, oh, excuse me, newspaper. And that's it, okay? Do we have a motion to accept these, or is there somebody wanting to pull?
I'll, I'll move.
Okay? You're making a motion to accept these. Do I have a second?
I'm making a motion to accept it.
Okay, Mr. Richardson seconded it. All in favor? Thank you very much. Yeah, number sixteen, executive session. The city council shall meet in executive session to discuss the following. City Secretary, Texas Government Code, Section five five one point oh seven four, personal matters. Uh, Sergeant Patrol Officer and School Resource Officer, Texas Government Code, Section five five one point oh seven four, personal matters. Uh, City Administrator, Texas Government Code, Section five five one point oh seven four, personal matters. And it is now seven twenty-six. Get that discussed, if we lose y'all, we'll thank y'all all for being here, if not, we'll see y'all when we come back out. Thank y'all.
Okay, it is now eight seventeen and our executive session is over. And it is eight seventeen and our regular special call city council meeting is now in session. Um, let me get here my notes and stuff. Uh, okay, uh, possible action. I see, uh, recurring into the open session, possible action on issues discussed in executive session. Okay?
No action.
Well, only on, uh, sergeant, patrol officer and school resource officers.
Okay, oh, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, resolution R eleven dash thirteen dash twenty, twenty-five dash six concerning that.
I have, okay, and, um, Richardson seconded it. All in favor? In unanimous, thank you ladies and gentlemen. Okay, and on city administrator, there is nothing to vote on on that. Okay, uh, once we find out some stuff, we will let everyone, everyone know. All right, uh, seventeen, police department retention, just done that one, okay, got that. And, uh, Prater?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
All right, all in favor? Yeah, all right, it is now eight nineteen and our special called council meeting is now over. That's Prater.